Call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Before we do the roll call, we'd like to welcome Doug on board. Then Buck Doug Ben Schuter, am I pronouncing it correctly?
That's close enough Hank.
Give it to me straight.
Ben Scooter.
Ben Scooter, thank you very much. So Isaac, would you call the roll?
Kate Payne.
Here.
Richard Dane.
Here.
Mary French. Stephanie Garner.
Here.
David Huser.
You're muted Dave.
I've got him on the screen, but I'm not here.
Are you unmute?
Kathy Olson. Heidi Solheim. And Douglas Ben Scooter.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Yes.
Okay. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Okay, those in favor say yes.
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 And opposed no, and the agenda is approved as it was distributed. Turning to the approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes this evening. One for the meeting of July 9th and the other for the meeting of July 16th. We'll take them separately. So do I hear a motion that the minutes of the July 9, 2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting be approved?
I so mo.
Stephanie, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Those in favor say yes.
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 And those opposed no. The minutes of the July 9, 2020 meeting are approved. Turning to the minutes of the July 16, 2020. Planning and zoning special meeting be approved. Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll move on that one too. I'll second that one too.
Okay, thanks Kate. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And those opposed? I think I only caught two yeses. Any others? We're going to declare that there were enough yes votes to carry that. Okay, let's move to the first item of business this evening. We're going to have a public hearing. Okay, we're going to have a public hearing this evening. And it's to review the Breezy Hill Plan Development District Amendment. If you would Isaac, give us a briefing on this.
Alright, so I know that this site plan is sideways, but. We've got Breezy Hills Site Plan Amendment here. This was something that was actually brought forward by the developer earlier this summer, but we had some questions about. Whether it was. What exactly was zoned? So there were some questions about whether it was zoned R1 or 2. Or if it was part of the plan development. We found, the best that we can find is that it is part of the plan development. It's part of the overall, the golf course. So that's why we're doing a site plan amendment, not a preliminary plat or final plat or something of that nature. So this is the proposed site plan. This was the site plan that was submitted by the developer back in 2013. As you can see, there's five single family units. That's the reason why if you look on Beacon currently. It shows these properties in five. You can see in five individual parcels. That's what they, that's what the development was proposed in 2013. That did go through planning and zoning and the city council and it was approved. Then obviously it was never developed. Now the developer has got some new information and he thinks that condos would sell better than the single family homes. And that's what he's looking to develop it as. Excuse me. I'm going back here. So as you can see, there's going to be 20 units in all. There's going to be two entrances. One off of, he's got it listed as 240th Street and Fairview Avenue. The streets are kind of funky in this area. I could, Fairview Avenue is also 11th Street. I believe southeast or south, yeah southeast. And then 240th Street is also 29th Avenue Southeast. So he's got two entrances that has been reviewed by Public Works. They're far enough away from that intersection. They didn't raise any concerns about that. There, like I said, there will be 20 units. The majority of the units, I believe seven of them will be just two unit condominiums. And then the buildings, housing units 16, 17, 18, and units 13, 14, and 15. Those will be two triplex type condominium units. Just kind of, he wanted to do. He wanted to do everything in just two condo, two unit condominiums, but he felt that doing the two triplexes. That would fit better on this property. It would be a private drive. There would be. A homeowners association of sorts to deal with snow removal and street repair and the things of that nature. I have gotten a couple of questions about water and sewer. I do believe that when this came through in 2013, the plan was to hook up to county water and then do a septic system. That is kind of sort of the plan. They are going to hook up to rural water, but the city sewer does go through this property. So you can kind of see that's the lime green line on this site, site plan. Right here and then right here. So they will be hooking up to city sewer. They just won't be hooking up to city water. The city water is pretty far up Fairview Avenue or when I say 11th Street. So we have received a couple of calls, no written complaints as of about nine minutes ago. I see that a couple of them are on this call. So if it's alright with you, I'll let them speak and then whoever doesn't speak, I can speak on their behalf and the concerns that they left with me. So.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's call the public hearing to order. For anyone who cares to speak, please state your name and try to keep it to five minutes and we'd like to hear from you. And you get a chance to go around again if there's more you'd like to say later. Please.
Well Ted, you need to unmute. There you go.
Okay, sorry. I'm Ted Whitman. I live here in Waverly, 129 Eagle Ridge Drive. On the Prairie, in the part of the Prairie Links development. And I'm also the property owner of the property directly to the west of the Breezy Hill property. So I share that north-south property line that's on the west side of Breezy Hill. I acquired the property, I believe it was in 2016. At that point in time, I knew what the planned development was for Breezy Hill. It was five lots, single family homes. Frankly, if you go ahead with this redevelopment plan with the condominiums, it would not be a property I'd be interested in in any way at all. So for me, the proposal to change the zoning to allow these 20 condominium units. The closest one would be within 25 feet of my property line. And I feel like it would greatly diminish the value of my property. And change the character and appeal of kind of a rural setting that we have there. I'm also concerned about the increased traffic with 20 additional households. And access points on 29th Avenue or I guess 240th Street, 11th Street or Fairview. In close proximity. To what I feel is somewhat of a blind intersection. It's. At least when I drive up there, it's, there always seems to be obstructive views. Particularly into the north and to the west if you're approaching from the north. And finally, living here in Prairie Links neighborhood, I've witnessed the lack of care and maintenance. That Everett has exercised on properties that he develops, including the area to be rezoned. Which raises concerns in my mind about the quality and the maintenance and the aesthetic appeal of this proposed development. One other thing I'd like to say is I, you know, I was late in acting. I believe my letter actually got forwarded to me in Florida. And addressed there and then forwarded back to me here in Waverly. So, you know, I'm just now becoming aware of the hearing and the proposed zoning change. I contacted today via email Brent Dalton, who represents the owners of Prairie Links Golf Course and part of the development here. He, just by email, he's out in Colorado right now. And his first comment was, I wonder why I wasn't notified about this proposed change. So it brings into question to me, were proper notifications made to those people that would be concerned by the change in the zoning of that area? That's all I have. I would encourage the zoning committee to reject this proposal. And stick with what was originally approved back in 2013.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that has something they'd like to offer?
Yeah, hello, this is Tyson Keith and we are also a resident on Fairview. Just north of the proposed rezoning area. And I would echo everything that was just, just said in opposition to the rezoning. And in addition to that, a concern of ours would be how the property would be. How developed and graded due to the runoff. We have, already have a lot of runoff that comes through. Anytime we get a decent amount of rain or melt, we have. We have a river essentially that runs through our property. So that would be also a concern of ours if we're, if we're going from five plots to. A lot more pavement and a lot more development there. So that would be a concern of ours. In addition to another concern of ours is that we currently rent part of our property out to a business who runs a horse stable. And it just having that much more traffic along that road, that many more people, that many more families. Just invite, invite additional liability in my opinion with, with the horse, with the horses essentially just across the road from there. So again, I, I, I'm in agreeance with, with the opposition that was already stated before, all those viewpoints and my additional.
Thank you Tyson. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Ken Riggs. Appreciate the opportunity and I live both in Prairie Links in a home and we built here 10 years ago. In addition, we have the 10 acres that's right across from this at the corner. I think, I forget what the old name is, some Holg Refinement or something, but my in-laws also live there. I would voice tremendous concern. If you go out there, the infrastructure really isn't made to accommodate. You know, those, you know, 20 homes. It's open ditch drainage. And like indicated, you know, those crossroads, if you know, the north-south, there's no stop sign. So I mean, cars are speeding through there and you know, the person coming from the east, you have to be very careful. So we go out there and again, we live in Prairie Meadows. So I would express one thing is just the infrastructure really is not set up. For a, again, that type of traffic. And the second thing I'd express, and if you do go forward, I would be, make sure that you have assurances. That the infrastructure does get completed from a water standpoint, from a road standpoint, and from a drainage standpoint. And I don't want to bring up any past sins, but if you recall with Prairie Links, which was Centennial Oaks. They fell upon, you know, financial difficulties, you know, John McKee with his heart and soul. But if you recall, at the very end, the city had to step in and finish some of the infrastructure with roads and things of that nature. So I would say, you know, on two bases. One is, it's not suited for, again, this. Multi, I guess, kind of multiplex, so to speak. And then secondly, if you do go forward, you truly have to assure all. Those that are here in Prairie Meadows and those that are nearby, that in fact, it will be completed. Because that's a very expensive endeavor to go ahead and put that street in, put the drainage in. And then lastly, I would make sure you verify with rural water, they have the capacity to be able to accommodate that. I mean, I don't know, we let rural water, they run on our property side. I mean, again, we're on the east side of that land and have the 10 acres. So that's my comment. I would be. You know, again, strongly in opposition to this unless, again, you know, those things were, you know, addressed. So. But thank you very much for allowing me, you know, some time here.
Thank you kindly. Some of the delay here is that we're turning on and off muting and unmuting. Ken, thank you very much. Are there others who would like to speak?
This is Elman Tetra.
Yes.
We purchased our home knowing that the land was zoned for single family development. And is there a good reason why this is going from five to 20? I guess that's my question. The other question is, is the sewer lift station large enough to handle 15 more units? I know when this was laid out, the city had prepared for so much residential in this area. And then. One other thing was, why is that property not been mowed in three and a half years? It's not considered golf course property, so not considered no mow. I guess the two vehicles have been out there for three and a half years and never moved. There's also a city ordinance about not doing that. You just can't leave stuff out. But that has not been addressed either. So I guess. The other thing is, I don't see a playground drawn on this plan that I looked at. And I don't see any water retention, which we, we all see how much water goes down through the Tyson property. There's just, there's numerous things that come into play here that I don't think are addressed on this, at this particular point. My concerns also, like Mr. Whitman and Mr. Riggs have talked about, is about the same and Tyson Keith.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to go. This is Jane Kilman. And I live at a property that is close to Tetra's, 125 St. Andrews Place. So our property, the backyard would look upon this other property. And I certainly have no issues with it being individual lots. But as I think somebody else hit upon, as you look at the character of how this area is set up. Adding 20 units doesn't really fit. When you look at, and it's already been hit upon, the infrastructure, if you come out here on. Almost any given nice day, it's amazing how many people are using the bike path. Well, when the bike path ends, they move over to the roadway. And so the roadway takes them. At that goofy intersection that's Fairfield and I think it was alluded to 28th or 29th. So when you look at adding potentially an additional 20 unit setup and the traffic that goes with that. That would certainly be something that would need to be addressed, whether it ends up being. An extension of the bike trail or looking at the patterns that are used. And the water retention issue, that is an interesting one, not only for Prairie Links, but as Tyson brought up. It is amazing, amazing the water flow. So if you take that big chunk of ground and turn it into housing and cement. The runoff is certainly a concern for a lot of us that are part of the water runoff and retention. So I would certainly. Ask Planning and Zoning to have a discussion, look at all the issues that go with it and. You know, certainly appreciate all your guys' time as volunteers and your willingness to put time and energy into this. So, and the other piece I was going to bring up because they were talking about letter writing. We had no idea that this was even in discussion. So I'm not sure how the letters and who gets informed, but I feel like we're a fairly close property to that. So if it weren't for our neighbor coming over and letting us know, I would not be sitting here on Zoom tonight. So I think there probably is more voices that could be heard or would like to be heard on this. But probably had no idea that this was even in discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
This is Eric Lee. We are the owners of the previously mentioned agricultural tenants of TM Keith Enterprises. We're at 2379 Fairview Avenue. Where we run a private equestrian operation known as Farmington Green. And I would first acknowledge the previously mentioned concerns, certainly. As a, as a localized concern here, drainage and grading is a significant issue, although I think that's been completely addressed here by previous commenters. I do think though, it's worth the readdressing the infrastructure and transit path concerns that have been previously brought up. The, the transit path to and from the relatively high density proposal which is going on here is going to add not only traffic. To 240th Street, but it will add meaningful traffic to Fairview Avenue, which is really not set up for a good deal of additional vehicle traffic at this time. And that's a very convenient path, made more convenient now to some of the new retail which has occurred. At the corner of Cedar River Parkway and 4th Street. So I definitely would say. This, the high density proposal that's here is not supported by the infrastructure that would deliver the traffic to it. Additionally, I just think this is a significant change in character which is being proposed for the neighborhood by this proposal. You know, first off, it is a different kind of housing than is generally in the area, followed by. You know, having meaningful prior exposure to this kind of development. These developments do tend to devolve both in physical and cultural character as they age. And I think that a proposal which includes this kind of density. On that small of a lot, which is landlocked around the golf course and the other ownership in the area. Is probably not a inappropriate fit for the neighborhood. I think it would be, I think it would be an outlier and I don't think it would be a net positive. So I, I also would ask the Planning and Zoning Council to consider not moving forward with this proposal and standing with the previous lot proposal. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone out there who has spoken but would like to say something else or to ask a question before we close the public hearing?
Is this Ken Riggs. Is Mark on the call to address kind of his perspective, the developer?
No, he is not.
And I just offer, I, that kind of makes me pause and as I mentioned about a commitment to do this type of development, if you go forward. It's significant in a financial commitment and it's significant in an emotional commitment, meaning, you know, being there and being able to complete it and such. So I would, you know, offer up, you should take that in consideration about, you know, the, the willingness, the commitment. To move forward because it's pretty significant. And it does surprise me that, you know, given the nature of this, you know, he's not represented in some manner. So again, thank you very much for your consideration.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, hi, this is, this is Tyson Keith, one more time. Thank you for, for having us again. I, I think that's a great point that, that Ken brought up because, you know, one of the questions I would like to have asked is. What are the, what are the plans for the development? What are the condominium association bylaws going to look like? Are we going to end up with. You know, subleasing to college students? I mean, I just, it is surprising that he isn't available to answer some of those types of questions and to give us a better. Look at what the future of the property is going to look like. And so I just would like to. Reiterate that point as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Mandy Keith, Tyson's wife. I guess I, I would just like to reiterate one more time. The, the infrastructure that is not currently set up to handle that much traffic. I know that's been mentioned several times, but. Especially on Fairview Avenue here where the culvert goes under the road and there's a bit of a bridge. Two vehicles cannot pass on that bridge at the same time. So one vehicle, I mean, maybe they could if they went, you know, five miles an hour. But currently one vehicle has to stop and wait for the other vehicle to cross that path. And really in fact, all up and down Fairview and I'm sorry, is it 240th? You know, I always slow down when someone's coming at me because the road is not wide. And to go along with that, like someone else said, it is very heavily trafficked by walkers, runners, bikers. And you know, some of those people have dogs with them or children with them. So that is just hugely concerning to me. As is the four-way intersection there where there's only one stop sign. I realize other stop signs could be added, but you know, there's crops on two sides of that and currently. The land that we're speaking about has not been maintained with any type of mowing. And as Elman mentioned, there are two vehicles that have been sitting there for years unmoved. So you have to come to a stop when you're heading east on that road. If you're planning to cross the intersection at all because of the weeds that have grown up on the property that we're talking about. So that's, that corner is very concerning to me also. So, and again, thank you very much for allowing us. So, and again, thank you very much for allowing us, um, to have some say here. Um, I was also puzzled as to why more of us didn't receive letters, so I appreciate, uh, the chance to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Also, I would like to thank everyone for what they do on this commission and to hear us out. Uh, thank you for all of what you do.
Thank you kindly. Uh, we're going to close the public hearing, but I would ask those of you who have-
One more thing. I'm sorry. Um, sorry, uh, and I do appreciate your time and, and your efforts that you put forth on, on the planning commission. Um, just wanted to point out that, uh, we, we've talked a lot about Fairview Avenue or 11th Street. And it does, uh, now with the opening of, uh, Cedar River Parkway. Um, if you are at that intersection, you're going to go down Fairview to, uh, go around the corner there and, and get out to Cedar Rally, uh, Cedar River Parkway. Uh, so there is increased traffic on that road already. That's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Okay, again, we hope that those of you who have spoken will stick around. Uh, we will adjourn the public hearing and have a discussion among the members of the commission. If any of the commissioners have questions of any of the folks who have uh, given their story tonight, please ask and, uh, we'll get you dialed back up. So. So the commissioners.
I have a question. This is Kate Payne. Um, somebody mentioned that the density is different than anything else around it. Um, i- is it indeed any different than, say, Augusta Circle in terms of its density? That, that kind of development within the middle of the golf course?
Kate, I, I would, uh, say it, it doesn't resemble Augusta Circle at all. Uh, that's, uh, those are all single-family homes.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking at it on a map. I can't really-
Right.
I don't, not familiar enough with what those each are. So these are units are proposed to be multi-resident units, not?
What I saw in, in, uh, perhaps Isaac could chime in here, but, uh, essentially 10 buildings with two units each.
Yep, that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. Uh, 20 units in total. Um, most of the buildings will be, um, two-unit, um, condominiums. There'll be two structures. It'll be, uh, three-unit, um, triplexes. So.
But they're condominiums, so they're owned, they're not rentals.
Correct.
Well, the other issue there, I don't know, can you hear me Hank?
Yes, Rich.
Um, the, the other issue is the, the acreage that this is on is entirely smaller, uh, significantly smaller than Augusta Circle. So you have greater density on less land.
I remember some years ago, and I regret that, uh, Dave Huser is not with us this evening, because he was also a part of the hearing when we looked at the five lots back, what was it, 2013? And, uh, e- even then, they seem small, given the five lots seem small, given the, um, the things that were surrounding it. And, uh, other comments from the commission?
Hank, this is Rich again. Can you remember at that meeting, I asked Isaac before and we couldn't find it, but we created those five lots. Did we create those from one lot or from two lots? That then-
I, I think it was one property that got divided five ways, but I, that's what, seven years ago? I don't really remember.
I, I had that, that same lack of memory. But the, the thing that concerns me is when we did the five, we were assured by the developer that his luxury homes were, uh, properly positioned for being built there. We made changes to the plan development that perhaps we shouldn't have at that time, but we did. Based on the fact that he was certain he could sell. Now, now here we are, seven years later. I'm concerned as can be that there's no mowing going on and that somewhat falls under our purview. But, uh, you know, I, I think this ball has been dropped. And what I hear from Mr. Waitman and, and the others is we really have far too great a density. It doesn't fit the area. Infrastructure really, uh, I don't think can handle 20 units, potentially 40 cars. Um, I, and we can probably talk about this all night, but unless I hear something real good, I'm not sure that this thing should be approved. In fact, I don't think it should be.
How about other comments?
Hank, this is Dave. I'm- Hank?
Yes, David, go ahead.
Hank?
Yes.
Yeah, I am with you. And, and I would say that, uh, Rich's, uh, comments are correct, as I remember it too.
So I have a couple of questions. Stephanie. Um, so it's currently set up as five, uh, single par- single home parcels. So then I would assume, how is that going to work zoning-wise? Are you going to take it back to one large parcel? Because it's going to be owned by the HOA, the dirt will be. So how does that, how does, how's the zoning done on that then? And is that a, um, what kind of a subdivision is that? And then I'm, and then I'm also wondering about the rural water. Somebody made a good point. Has anyone reached out to rural water to see if they have the capacity to handle that many units? I'm curious about that too.
Yeah, so, um, starting with the rural water issue, um, that's something that Mark Everett, the developer, has said that he has talked to them. Um, they have assured him that the 20 units, um, that wouldn't be a problem, uh, connecting up to rural water. Uh, if this were to go to city council level, at that point, he would be required to submit, um, performance types bonds and, and things of that nature. At that point, um, we would require something from them assuring, uh, basically that it's a capability. Um, as far as your first question with the condominium, um, they'd be purchasing, um, the unit, so it would likely stay as the five parcels as it currently lays. And then the units themselves would be specifically sold. Um, and then that would be governed by, um, restricted covenants, uh, or homeowners association type, um, documents that would be submitted again at the city council level.
Another question. Is there a, a skla- a sketch with dimensions or anything for the size of the units? Uh, how many garages? You know, I can't, I don't see dimensions on here to know what size of units we're looking at.
At this point, we have not received, uh, any documents of that nature.
Yet another question. Um, is there a separate drainage page that we have not seen? That does have a retention and does have excavation?
Again, what you're looking at is the information that I've been provided. Um, what I'm told is that the water will go towards 240th Street. There is a ditch there. Um, I haven't received any stormwater, uh, plans from them at this point. So this, what, what we've got here on the agenda is what I've been given.
It seems to me that we've got one of three choices to make. We can either approve this, uh, petition or we can not approve this petition, or we can send it back for additional information. Uh, what are some of your thoughts on that?
I personally would be in favor of additional information.
Anyone else?
Really would have been nice to have, uh, some representative from the developer here to answer any questions whatsoever. If it was, if, if they were really interested in seeing this go forward, I, I would have certainly had somebody here.
Isaac, if you would, would you explain the ground rules on those three options? Um, if, if we move it forward, it goes city council for consideration. If, um, we put it on hold, um, nothing happens. But if we vote it down, uh, it is not going to be eligible to come back up on the table for what period of time? Is it two months?
Um, I'd have to check on that to be sure. I was thinking it was a little bit longer than that. Um, if, if the board, because the board is, uh, breaks, makes recommendations. So if the board recommended denying, um, the site plan amendment, they, the developer still could take it to city council. At that point, it would require a super majority, uh, vote from the city council to be approved. Um, obviously, if, uh, the, the commission recommends approval, then it goes to city council and all it requires is a majority vote. Um, if the count, the commission, um, tables the issue, then obviously they'd be able to bring it back next month with more information, a, uh, representative. Um, I think that, and I don't know if Tim Kangas is on the call with us, but, um, I know that Tim in the past has suggested we either approve yes or no, if we're going to go forward. Um, or if we want to wait, we can. Um, I guess I would recommend either making a recommendation to approve or deny. We've been working with the developer for a while now, and this is the information that we've received from them.
Okay, that, that's helpful.
This is Rich again, Hank.
Please.
I, I, I would say that we call the motion and, and as it's been presented, neither vote it up or vote it down.
And before we do that, I would like to say just a couple of things. Um, to people that did not speak here, I just want to make sure that their, um, their views are, are represented in this meeting. Um, I did receive a call from Bob Buckingham. Um, he essentially echoed a lot of the same concerns as, uh, the people that have spoken here tonight about traffic, uh, not fitting, um, the neighborhood, um, concern about density. Um, and also, uh, from Dan Kilman. Um, again, the, what the site plan is being presented as is much different from a single family. Um, that was his big complaint. Um, the other thing that I'd like to say to the individuals that have spoken here tonight, with the letters that were sent out, um, the city code and state, uh, law requires that we send out to 250 feet from the property. Um, 250 feet from these five properties only includes four other properties. So that would be why you were not, um, notified, because we were, we were going by what our city code requires us to do. So I apologize that you didn't receive, uh, notice. Um, obviously, the people that did contact me had tried to provide as much information as I could, so they could be as informed as they could. But again, I apologize, but, uh, we were following what the city and the state code says.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the, uh, state code is 200 feet. And the city of Waverly, and this commission decided we needed to do 250 just to make sure that, uh, we, we'd be in compliance. But, uh, I, I think that's a good statement, Isaac. It, it helps. What I'm hearing from the commission is that you're ready to hear a motion. Is that correct?
Yes, Hank and I would echo from what was-
Hank?
I would prefer, at least from my view, view from the city council view, an up or down from the, from the commission. So if you did want to get more information, that's fine, but give us an up or down for it.
Thank you, Tim. Someone else was trying to get in.
Hank, this is- Hank?
We can hear you, Dave.
Yes.
All right. This is Dave. Um, I would move that the Planning and Zoning Commission deny, uh, the application of Breezy Hills Plan Development District Amendment to the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Isaac, I'd like to do a roll call.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Just a reminder, a yes vote is to recommend denial. A no vote is, um, to, uh, not recommend the denial. So just to clarify that. Um, Douglas, uh, Bench, Ben Scooter?
Yes.
David Huser?
Yes.
Stephanie Garner?
Yes.
Richard Dane? Kate Payne?
Yes.
Hank Bagelman?
Yes.
The motion is carried and the, uh, petition is denied. Let's move to the next side of the business. This is regular business.
You're muted.
No, you're-
You're-
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Uh, the, the motion is carried, then the petition is denied. And we're going to move now to regular business. And it's for a preliminary plat for Royal Nut Bridge subdivision. And, uh, Isaac, again, if you'd, uh, fill us in on this.
Yes. Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to get on a second, uh, log off here. All right, so, um, if you remember, this property came, um, I believe it was in June for a rezoning. It was rezoned as agricultural. Um, they requested a rezoning to R1 single-family residential. Uh, now they're ready to proceed with subdividing the property so that they can get going on, uh, developing it. Um, the preliminary plat before you shows four lots. Um, the lot four, that's the largest acre, uh, lot, largest lot, excuse me, at 3.85 acres. Um, that will be kept as kind of a wooded, uh, lot. They're, they're not planning on developing that lot currently. And then the front three, uh, lots, lots one, two, and three. Um, lots two and three, both at 1.17 acres, and then lot one at 0.74 acres. Those would be developed as single-family lots. Let me try. Zoom in here. So currently, pull up Beacon here and go to this property. So you can see that currently this is actually two separate lots, and this skinny lot right here, um, it actually has prevented them, um, so if they want to develop it right now, they actually would have to, um, come in onto this property off of, uh, this driveway, which they'd share with, uh, the gridders. Um, they have an access easement across this lot. Um, they would not allow a, uh, public works and zoning as well. Our code prohibits them from putting a, uh, sidewalk in, uh, this, or excuse me, a driveway in this area, because we only allow one driveway per property. Um, so they had discussed potentially putting a driveway right here. Um, the plans that they've submitted, they're going to continue to use this access easement to, um, access these three lots. Um, then you can see the proposed sewer line and the proposed water line. They'll be running along, uh, these proposed easements, uh, in this area. Uh, there is currently a utility box right here. There's going to be, uh, utility easement for it. It specifies electric and fiber optics. They'll run it, um, down this easement and they'll connect here. Um, and then it'll be used by these three lots and as well as the gritter's property. Staff's recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat. Um, and we go to future land use, and this is for residential. Um, we, staff's opinion, uh, we've got single-family residential surrounding this. Um, it'll be a private drive. They'll be maintaining, the three property owners, uh, will, uh, be required to maintain the drive. Um, so we think that it fits with the neighborhood. And again, staff's recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat.
Okay, let's have some discussion about this. Commission?
So lot number three is accessed how? I don't think I quite understood that.
Yep. So lot three will be accessed, again, here, I'll zoom in on this. So all three of these lots will be accessed off of this driveway. Like I said, there's an access easement that the gridders' property uses to access their property. So that access easement, it goes, I believe, right here is where it ends. So in somewhere in this area, kind of where the 225 marker is, they'll actually come onto this, the property and then access lot three. So there's already an access easement in place for that, and they'll just maintain that access easement.
Other comments?
Are there any city specifications on that driveway? How wide it needs to be? Is it just considered personal property?
So we have city requirements on the driveway at the right-of-way line and at the curb line. I believe that when it was put in, I don't have all the information on that. We have requirements on pavement and width. Obviously, it's not concrete. I believe there's some sort of deal made at the time when the gridders' property was developed. I think the plan currently, and if there's somebody that is with this JCLJ on the call, I'd encourage them to step in and correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe the plan is that they're going to either asphalt it or kind of upgrade the driveway.
From the drawing, the driveway appears to be about twice or better the width of the existing roadway into the house to the south.
Or is that just the easement for the water and sewer?
That's just the easement.
There's an access easement that's right along the southern property line of what the proposed lot one, two, and three are. And then to the north of that, that's going to be the sewer and the water easements. So I know that it's kind of hard to see because all the easements, the proposed easements are running into each other. But yeah, there's significant easement space there for the access easement for the water line and for the sewer line.
This is Rich. In my opinion, this is a great use of three, or of some land that's going to be pretty hard to develop. It's pretty land, but it's going to be a little creative to do it. I think they've done a nice job. I would encourage us to approve it.
Are you ready for motion?
I move that the planning and zoning commission recommend the preliminary plat for the Walnut Ridge subdivision to proceed.
We have a motion? How about a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I think it was Stephanie. No?
It was Kate.
Kate? Thank you, Kate. Any further discussion? Again, let's do a roll call.
All right, David Huser?
Aye.
Stephanie Garner?
Yes.
Richard Dane?
Yes.
Kate Payne?
Yes.
Hank Bagelman?
Yes.
Douglas Ben Scooter?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried and this will be forwarded to city council. Any old business?
I do not have any.
Isaac has none. Any new business? I need a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
It's moved and seconded. We are adjourned. And Doug, welcome aboard.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.